Let's try that again. It is now four seventeen. This is Phil Stephen, Super Tena Schools, calling the Board of Education Curriculum Committee to order. It is March sixth, twenty twenty four. We are, I have two items on the agenda today, and the first one is to discuss the CKLA program, the State mandated reading program, and really to mention to start with what you got for feedback, Kristen, for you and Lisa, so if you want to share that to start for what you heard.
Yeah, getting, it was tough to find the ones we talked to. I started, I mean, we went down a couple of different avenues, but we ended up speaking to two people who are representative, recommended to us, but I also did reach out to other people who did not respond. We talked to the two people who did respond to us. We were not able to speak to somebody who has been using the program for a long time. I did reach out to people who have been using the program for a long time and they did not respond. So the two people that we spoke to, there were schools that, one is a school in Pennsylvania, one is a school in New Jersey. And both schools have not been using CKLA for an incredibly long time. What they have been using it, well, I would say a year. And they, as far as scores are concerned, because that was the main question, they discussed their DIBLs scores and they said that they saw an incredible growth in their winter benchmark, so they, from the previous year. So the work that they had done, they saw most, a lot of it was in like their accuracy scores for DIBLs. Most of the DIBLs winter benchmark they saw, they would have, they said that they had about fifty percent of kids at goal. And they didn't give an exact number, but they said that it went up quite a bit from there. That's the information that we received. We went out and tried to find. That was, that was as far as like scores went. There's more information that I can share and it was, they really talked a lot about, we asked them how long, what bridge are currently using the program. One school was only using it in K to two, the other school was using it in K through eight. And then again, the impact on student outcomes, they just said in a short period of time, they saw incredible means and they use their DIBLs scores to to as their measurement. And as far as what the rollout looked like, it's what it, that was the other thing too, to make sure that we spoke to someone whose rollout was what it should be as far as if they had professional development, they were using all the pieces. If you speak to someone who didn't have any professional development or they're only using some of the pieces, then it's kind of tough to say. And that was, that's probably the most difficult, that was what was the most difficult thing was finding someone who, the school is actually using it with fidelity, using it or using it in a way where they're using all the pieces and not swapping out pieces. Because we're not going to be swapping out pieces, we're using all the pieces. So just trying to go back to what I was just saying, it was kind of went on a little bit of a tangent. But again, yeah, so support from the company, also professional development and using all of the pieces. So all these two schools did that. They said that the professional development was really helpful. There are teachers that might have been a little reluctant, but as they were supported and started working with the program, most of the teachers, not all, were very much on board and were enjoying teaching the curriculum, were also kind of their students were enjoying it, they were, they're making gains, they had a lot of positive family feedback. And we asked at the end, would you do this again if you had the choice? And they said absolutely yes, both schools. The school, the feedback from both schools was pretty similar and it matched the feedback. We've been gathering feedback from different districts for two months. So while I didn't have specific names for you with the last meeting, what I've done is just collected feedback from dozens and dozens of teachers, coaches, whomever had been using the program, and I just put together a summary. And these two schools, so if you wanted the specific schools, Selinger of Pennsylvania, we talked to Principal Damien Gessel. And then the other school was Harmony Township in New Jersey, and we spoke with the principal. His name isn't on here though, because he stopped in after, at the end, we talked to Vicky Demarest, the literature specialist, and then Jess Piazza of the library. And everything that they said is very much similar, their feedback is very similar to each other's and very similar to the feedback that we'd collected for our original meeting. And I also found out that the other school systems around us who are adopting CKLA are Ellington, Stafford, and Pomper, Hebron, and Columbia.
Did the school that was only K two say anything about why they only, like, K two didn't go beyond?
Because they're a K two school.
That makes sense.
Well, I can say for even Pomper.
And Columbia.
The piece that I, I sat down with Kristen, we went through just lists of materials and costs. And we can absolutely, I'm pretty confident, we can put together an order that is pre-K to eight. Using just some of our best supplies, if I have to push some, a little bit of money for REEP. But looking at what we have for numbers, the grants, there's two grants that we have that the state provided for this program. That only applies to K three, that will get us a three-year subscription. We'll call it subscriptions, the, the, the workbooks and stuff. The more expensive side, on the, the ARPAS or grant really falls into grades four and five. Because those would still use the consumables. And then sixth grade, not, right?
Sixth grade is a different, a different company.
And sixth grade was, becomes the CKLA, not the Amplify version. And so she has kind of the bare minimum cost that I definitely, we can definitely absorb. We could do this K eight, pre-K eight. Obviously, there's a, you know, I've asked her to kind of make a wish list, like, okay, if we didn't have to make copies six through eight, what would it look like for cost? If we want to do consumables, what would it look like? What would the cost be? And then after the, the third year, there would be, and obviously, we don't know how prices will increase or what it will be, but you would basically just be paying for the consumables. And typically consumable, you know, do you remember how much it was?
It was thirty-eight dollars a workbook, that money not even be high.
Yeah, I can't remember if it was, we might have said, yeah, I can't remember what the, the dollar amount, but what it was. It was something that I think that could be absorbed into the board event budget. It would, it wasn't like, there's no way we could do this without grants or something like that. So that was the one thing I wanted to make sure, because I do think if you're going to do professional development and all the professional development money would fall within the grant. The K three program would fall within the grant, and then beyond that, we would use the ARPAS or grant to balance out the remainder. And I do think we have funds to do that. Which is good.
And does that include, I know, noticed that some of the six to eight have trade books?
Yeah, that's, so those are, we have to purchase, but there are certain books that, well, there's trade books and then there's the, the actual student book, so.
Right, but then there was like novels, there were some of those that were, some you could download.
Oh, yes, yes, so sort of those are the core, because those are the core novels or student books for each, yeah, like the Iliad and the Odyssey, like that was, there are some that are written by core knowledge. And there are some that are, you just don't order, you know, it was honors, or they're not even, they're all, they're not written by core knowledge. But it's something like a Hello Universe, that's a book, that's a seventh grade, it's a New Bayred honor, or New Bayred winner. So that book would not be a core knowledge, but you have to order that. And then the other books, what, there are teachers piloting right now, so the books that are written by core knowledge, they can print like a chapter and then have the students read that printed chapter, that's what the teachers were piloting and trying to think about right now are doing. They just can't do that with books that are ones you can't print from the website.
Right.
That answer your question? Yes.
And we, we do have some funds that are within the board budget that are for books. It's, it's a general, I mean, we've, we've had that in there. And there's some supply money that, you know, there's things we can draw upon to add. But we want the bulk of this, and Kristen and I just having a conversation, that if the board approves it, if it goes to, if you recommend it and the board approves it, the first round of ordering really is the Amplify, because it's two separate orders between CKLA is kind of the six through eight and the Amplify is the other one. It's, it's, we can keep adding to it as we go. If we discover we need something, you have typical board budget dollars that if you, you know, if you don't have something, then we could, we could get. Questions about what you saw other things come up?
No, I'm just glad you were able to reach out and get some, some kind of feedback. I mean, a year's a year, I'd like for longer, but it's not like you can, I'm not saying that. But yeah, I'm just glad you were able to reach out. There's a couple surrounding towns here, Ellington and Stafford, that are, that are using it too, so at least there's, and Columbia. So I mean, there's at least a couple in the area that it's been.
I think the important piece to that for us, in, in my opinion, is that it gives us very close proximity to go and talk to other professionals for professional development. Like, if you're living something and you're, especially when you're small, you know, and you only have a couple grade level teachers, if you want to send them out and get subs for a day and, and go talk to another second grade teacher, or go talk to another third grade teacher, or at the middle school level, when you're a soloist, which is what we have right now, those people could go to another middle school if they're using a K eight and have conversations, say, how are you doing this? What's it look like? Have you done any supplement, supplementing? And, you know, what are your assessments of like all those types of things? So it's, it's nice, because sometimes you have to travel the ways to get like, you know, partners. Other Collins questions?
Just looking through it, it seemed like it checks all the boxes of the that Garbo's wrote with all the different pieces. And if they blended together, I really, I really like the there's a lot, when you, when you go to a higher grade, it'll tell you what has already been taught about that topic or that, you know, I think it was like civilizations or something. And then it'll tell you if your students haven't had this, this is the stuff you need to fill in. So that spiraling, but also that back, background knowledge that they might not have, bring it back in.
Yep.
You could see that in there. I like that too. It's very helpful.
For our thoughts, I'm not sure if you have something to say or not. Any other, so what, what, what are your thoughts moving forward? I mean, it, it's, it's, you know, you recommend this or it's like back to the drawing board, you have to do something, right? We have to do something. And I think the hodgepodge approach is, is definitely not, you know, the compendium of resources that they call it, where you got to pick five different programs, four different programs, I think we're, we're really pushing away from that. It would be looking at a program, and then as we build, you know, as we use the program, we can supplement literature where we want, you know, as, as, if there's something that's needed to do that. But I don't know that there's, and I think that's your recommendation to you, Kristen, I don't know that there's a better program, and it sounds like there's a reason people are that's a small, that's a large number of districts nearby that are going to this program. That we know of right now, going to the same program. So I think that's a good sign too, that it's not just us. If you made that recommendation.
So my only other question is, so Columbia is a theater school on the EEO, but it's very, very small percentage. The biggest percentage of the theater in the EEO is Mansfield, and then Russian Ashford, actually. Do you know what Mansfield is using for their?
Yeah, actually, we met yesterday because I had samples of the, they're using, and they had actual samples of CKLA, so we did a swap yesterday at Mansfield elementary school very quickly. They're using Benchmark Advance. And they are using foundations. And the reason why they chose Benchmark Advance, one of the reasons why is because they'd already invested in foundations, so that was something that they could use as foundations.
So clarify.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Foundations is one of the phonics programs that's on the state groupers list. So it's also part of a couple of the compendiums. So we're using Ufly and the foundations is a lot, is a much bigger commitment as far as if you're going to purchase foundations, it's an investment. Where Ufly wasn't a huge investment, it's a manual.
Kind of sort of significant cost difference?
Yeah, so they could not choose a program that they could not use with the foundations. They would not be able to, yeah, they would not be able to use CKLA.
So you're saying Ufly will use the Linux and the CKLA?
It, it does, even though we're not using it anymore, it's very similar to the program that's in CKLA. And also Ufly was not in, we were still using it also for intervention, we're still going to be using it. So everything that we purchased through Ufly is still going to be used. It's either going to be repurposed or it's all going to be just part of woven into what we already do. And again, it was just a manual, that was the only real purchase.
Okay. What was the program? You said the first program?
Foundations.
No.
Oh, Benchmark, you're saying that Mansfield is using a Benchmark Advance?
Is that one of the programs that was approved?
Yeah, and we looked at that.
Okay.
Like in very great detail.
Are they only using a K three?
I, they might be using it more, but I'm not positive, I don't remember.
It wasn't the biggest roadblock on that one for us, was it the cost thing, or is it the, just that it's not, it wasn't compatible with what we had before?
Well, I mean, it wasn't in the original presentation of the buckets, the heavily published programs and the programs that were started from either like teachers and, and also I could not get the representative to respond to me. Just retries. I was, I, I had a login that I, I was going to do, I was ready to do a presentation on a whole bunch of our after teachers. And my login was working and I reached out three times saying, we need the presentation, no one ever responded. So. I hope they're having better luck than I did, with that heart, anyway.
But based on what you said about the letters training matching up with this CKLA probably batches up better than the foundations.
Yes.
The teachers would have to be trained in foundations. And it, you know, in order to be able to use the other, you know, if they weren't ready to use, because Benchmark maybe doesn't have a phonics program, is that? I don't know.
It does, and I do think different school systems have different rules depending on what they're, what the state's asking them to do, I don't know it. So I'm not positive why, what their situation is as far as why they can use foundations with Benchmark. But I don't know exactly, I don't really remember, but I do know that, that's what she told me, the person I told me to. That that's why they chose Benchmark, because they had a very small number of programs they could choose from, because they had these foundations with them. There is definitely a phonics program with it. It doesn't get very good feedback.
But you said this works really well with letters, which is already, you've invested a lot of time in money.
It matches, it's beautifully. And that's something that as we worked through with the teachers, they notice, they noticed that, that was on, I worked at grade levels on Monday. That was something that came up quite a bit. Oh, yeah, just from that too.
I would feel comfortable recommending it based on your presentation and just looking through the materials. And the fact that it's one of the programs that the state is asking us to do.
Yeah, I, I would recommend it almost on the, on the contingent that we, we get the consumables for the kids, because this is what I actually dovetailed last thing into the next topic, but I like having that paper piece of it, not just for the kids, but for the parents as well, to see what's going on. So that and the fact that all of this is available online, anybody wants to see it, I think that's also a big plus, so.
Any other comments that, we'll move on?
Yeah.
Phil put it on the agenda for Tuesday, next week? And then, do you want Kristen to come do some sort of presentation? Do you want her to do a shorter presentation? That's just a snapshot, you know, of what she did. I don't think the full presentation she did last time is, should be done in front of the full board. I think it should be shorter and then you could make the base, the recommendation based upon, you know. She's, I think her job would really just be give the background, like, we, this is what we had to do. We had to go, these are the programs we investigated. We did the, you know, whittled it down, and this is why the, you know, six points of why this is, CKLA is being recommended by the school district, and then you would be the, the final, and you recommend it. Does that make sense?
Guaranteed.
So if you don't have any plans Tuesday night, can you do a brief presentation?
I should.
Okay. Then we can just tweak what you have, I think.
Just let me know what you want me to take out.
Yeah, 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 we can, we can figure that out. Okay.
I think it's important to connect it to what we are here using and the training that we already have. That's a very connection, I think that's an important thing.
Yes.
I don't want parents, people to feel like we did all of this and now it's going out to the show and being replaced, and I don't want our staff to feel that way either. That for me was a big point.
That's excellent advice, thank you.
All right, and then the second item on here was discussion on reporting trimester student, and I wrote trimester, but student progress for parents and guardians, because I think it spans K eight, pre-K eight.
Yeah, so this one that came up fairly recently, and I'm, I'm speaking as the parent with a child in school at this point. In speaking with the faculty, it, it came across that a lot of the kids do their work in class and they get now, I know it's called something different, I'm just going to call them testing quizzes, because that's what they were when I was at school, but I know like benchmarks or something. But, but they're, they're done and the, and the kids take them and they're used in, in calculating their grade, but a lot of times, parents never see them. And I asked about that, I said, well, if, if if the test score, it was, it was a, what's the state test now? I can't remember.
Test back or I ready?
I ready, it was the I ready test. It was a poor performance on the I ready test, and I went in to see what was going on, and it was, well, she is maybe testing bad because, you know, she's doing well in every other aspect. And I don't know that as a parent, I wouldn't be panicking if I, if I knew as things are going along, that, you know, it's just might not be, it was, might not be the tester, maybe it was difficult on the computer or something like that. But it, it came across in the meeting that because of the curriculum that we have, we're not, we don't have to send things home essentially, because either a lot of stuff is done off paper or it's just not coming home. And that concerns me as a parent, only because I'm not, I'm not able to see the progress through the year. So I'm wondering, my, my question is, and I bring it to the curriculum committee, because it was referenced, and the reasoning was, well, that's how the curriculum is. It's ripped that way. So I guess my, my two questions are, one, is that really true, in quotes, is that really accurate? And two, is there anything we can do to change that? Because I know I'm not the only person that feels this way, from the parent's side.
Yeah.
And I can't imagine there's people who wouldn't like to see the progress of their kids as the year goes through and be able to make comparisons between everyday work versus the test, because I know that when things, when things get brought up, tests become, they become a piece of the puzzle, which I don't disagree with, but if I don't have the rest of the puzzle, I, I don't see, I already see the test part of it. So that's what I'm, that's what I'm wondering here, is to whether or not that's an accurate statement about the curriculum as a whole. And if there's anything we can do to change that or tweak that or.
You want to respond to that? You were nodding, so I wasn't sure if that was, I have a response, okay.
Yep, so I'd say each curriculum a little bit different, so I won't say the blanket answer covers all of them, because UA looks a little, will look much different than like math. So not a blanket answer. However, I would say, no, there are every, all curriculums have pieces that absolutely can be shared with parents. For instance, our math curriculum, all the students have math workbook, so there's daily worksheets, there's checkpoints. And then there's unit assessments, all of which can be copied and sent home. And I say copied, because the teachers do, when they, and this is different between middle school and elementary school. Middle school is grade-based, right? We're looking A, B, C, D, so power school makes a whole lot of sense because of the numerical grade. And when we're talking about mastery at the elementary school, it doesn't work as easily, so when you speak to mastery, you need to, you need evidence. So when you're, when the teachers are going to sit down to do report cards, and they have to decide if a student is meeting, they're pulling out the student samples, they're pulling out these, these samples of work and looking for the evidence point of mastery. So they do need to hold on to certain pieces in order to fill out report cards and speak to their mastery along the way, and that's in all subject areas. So that's, so, but there certainly can be copies made of the, the work that they're doing and shared. Also, you spoke to I ready, I ready, we can, it's very easy to print out a report, that they, there are individual student reports for both subject areas, math and reading, that can be printed out and sent and shared with, with parents, which also shows the breakdown of the subdomains within the bigger test. So you can see like how they performed altogether in math, but then the different subdomains and how they performed within the math assessment or reading assessment. So those are very easy to print out and share as well.
Okay. So is, is it a matter of the parents inquiring, or can we make it a situation where we have something out there that says that you want copy of the checkpoints, let's be called, the checkpoints and mastery assessments at the elementary level or, you know, that? Because, so when we talk about power school in the middle school level, is that more evident? I mean, it's still not. So I guess, I guess I'm answering my own question, because it may be more evident in like the, in the way it goes across, but you still don't know on the paper, like, what the weak point is. Like what, if someone got to see, if you see grade, you don't see, you don't see where, where there might be some lacking or some excelling. Is there a way we can give parents an option to get these pieces throughout the year or?
I think it's, I think it's both. So one is, I think we could put it out there to say, if you wanted a copy of something, you'd by all means reach out to a teacher, right? That's, that's fine. I think the second part is we have a responsibility to make sure that we're providing ongoing information for a student's progress. It also has to be reasonable, because, you know, we, we've chatted about this spreadsheet that we keep that has loads of scores, and it would be nothing to you as a parent, means a lot to us, but there's things that we could do through power school, just to report out, like, are you functioning where we think at grade level at this point in time, or, you know, mastery or not? If we can provide those updates and get examples, because you can tie a standard to an assignment. And for you as a parent, you should be able to read a standard and go, okay, I get what you're talking about there, I know what they need to work on. I could ask for, you know, or Google, well, how can I support this? If you wanted to, you could figure that out. So I think it's, it's both. We definitely, Arthur, for sure have some work to do around this. And I think the changes in a, a lot of things here are, are, are what's impacting it. Number one, changing curriculum, changing assessments, to be quite frank with you, we're evaluating I ready again. We're looking at I ready going, if we have a new program, does I ready work for math but not for ELA? Because we don't want to over assess, assess either, right? So as we adjust curriculum and CKLA is adopted, we have to go back and look at assessments again. And then what does go home? What does get photocopied? What gets, you know, what doesn't go home? Because sometimes you don't want to send assessments either. All of that, to me, needs to be identified for teachers, and I don't know that we're there yet.
Okay.
We definitely have some work to do around it. Um, we definitely have some work to do around it. I-ready is an easy example, but it's just one, and to your point, it's well taken, like, you know, it's one score and sometimes. We, we use kind of the, uh, uh, student scores and their I-ready to go. To make a prediction about how they're gonna do on Sback. And we usually have a pretty good idea how a student's gonna score. Um, where I-ready is helpful is going into those specific strands Aaron was talking about, so, you know. We need to identify what everyday work comes home, so parents can go, hey, this is how I can support my kid, because that's really important to us. Um, what assessments do we send, what assessments do we keep, um, what do we put in power school and how often? Um, I always said as a principal, you should be putting something in to give parents an idea. It shouldn't be the first time for uh report cards, because that doesn't help along the way. Um, but it's been a lot for teachers with our changes that we've made. And we've kind of gone, focus on the new things that we're doing as opposed to, you know, doing lots of reporting. So that to me is important, and the last thing I'll say is the timeliness of reporting. Um, is something that we have to make sure we identify as part of that process, because timeliness for you really is. If it's six weeks past the topic, is that gonna help you as a parent if you wanted to do something at home on your own? It's, it's not, and so we need to identify that as, as, you know, we go through this process. And it's really every curriculum we have, what goes home and what doesn't, um, is there homework, is there not? Uh, and what does that homework look like, is it useful or is it busy work, like, we're evaluating all those things. Um, and the last piece of that is report cards. Uh, our report cards right now are, I will call them average. And we don't want average report cards, but curriculum has to be in place first, assessments have to be in place first. And then, because we have the standards, then we can go back and go, okay, what needs to be adjusted in our, our report cards now? So that's kind of like, we know in the next year or two, we have to take a serious look, and that's, I'm gonna say K eight. Not as much pre-K because they have the standards, um, but K eight, it needs to be looked at across the board. So there's a lot of things that we need to do on the home side and the reporting side. That it, it's gonna take some time, um, but it's definitely in the works and we know it.
Okay, I will say though, to your, to your timeliness point, um, I will say that you just, if you get something six weeks later. And it is a shortfall area, I'm still gonna work on that shortfall area, no matter how late it is, so I don't think, I don't think timeliness is. It's, it's a concern if, you know, uh, a benchmark test is coming up, but even after the fact. If, if you notice that it's, it's something that can be worked on at any point, something that needs to be worked on, so.
Yeah, I mean, I don't know, do you have anything to offer as, as a coach and, and?
I mean, not as a coach, but as far as maybe, I guess it's as a coach, but the, as we've been talking about in programs. That every time I meet with teams, we discuss that same topic. So we're looking at a program and we, we've made, nothing's been proven, we made decisions, but what would it look like? As far as what would, what could, what would workar divisions look like? What um kinds of all this, this, these consumable materials that we have, you know, the, a workbook for every single unit? What things are things that would go home, what were, are things that would not go home, what are the things that are being reported to parents? What are the things that you don't necessarily need, is just for teachers to just quickly track and be repetitive? So we've definitely been, today I had multiple discussions about that, Monday, I had a discussion with teachers about that. So that's something on our radar with our new um possible program.
And I, I know that consumables cost money, I personally think it's money well spent, because I think it provides a very good picture.
I think it also provides consistency, which is important to me. Um, you know, sometimes I'm, I'm not real keen on, on programs, because it, it takes away some of the art of teaching. Um, but at least we're, we're implementing with consistency because of those, and we see that right now in math. The conversations, I think that, because they have consumables in math, uh, they're, they're there stronger, so.
And that's another conversation we have with art and with the program, that's, we haven't had a program like this yet in our district. Is how do you preserve that art in your, in your own personal teaching style with a program? And um, that, no one seems very concerned about that, so just. Know that they, um, with the materials that, should we adopt this program, they could, they could definitely bring their own. Um, personality or whatever is into it while still being consistent with the district. And the opportunity to bring in other texts too, in this current program, which is a positive point, you can bring in all literature and all kinds of enrichment.
Yeah. Any other comments or questions on that?
Is there, um, you were talking about? The uh, the dibbles online stuff? Is it any kind of a discount if you included it in the entire program or is that?
So M-Class is the program, it's within our pricing. So we, we, it's a, the full, and if I'm gonna understand this right, M-Class is part of that three-year commitment.
Okay.
And there's a discount for the number of years you purchase it or not.
Yeah.
Necessarily, when purchasing it with CKI.
Okay, if you want to see a sample of it, I, I have demo lessons that I, or demo reports that I could share. With, with you or anyone on like a school computer, but I mean, I don't even need my computer, I just need to go on the account. And I can share with you what kinds of things that you can do if you're questioning whether you should go with it or not.
Definitely questioning whether to go with it or not, but for sure, like, I need more information to be more prepared for when it, you know, should it arrive?
Yeah.
Yeah, it doesn't have to happen in a meeting setting, I can come and just share it with you, because it, every time we use it, you find another piece that. We say, oh wow, that's really helpful.
We've been looking for ease of data reporting, ease of data collection, ease of data input, we've been looking for something for a while. And it just makes sense as part of this because of the dibbles. Um, it, it really, and it impact, the people that are impacted by the, this really is early elementary. That's the group that really, I think is gonna see the big benefit of that. Um, and I would expect, I'd be curious to see what the reporting portion out of this, uh, from a parent's side, because, you know. We have high value assessments, dibbles as well.
It, it just prints out um a sheet, um, you know, it can show you the report where the kids, what the benchmark. Point is and where your kid is, and then it can also say, there's a home connect section that tells you like what things that you can do at home. With the kids, and then on a teacher's side, it's got a whole bunch of activities that you can do.
Resources, yeah, yeah.
Based on the kid, the student's um performance.
Okay.
Great.
And you may have to use it just for literacy, I think, for dibble?
Yes.
We had a presentation by M-Class to have last year.
Yeah.
But having it online is a game changer.
Yeah, we were hoping to find, so we, we did actually really like M-Class. The reason we didn't go with it is we were hoping to find one that had both a house for our ELA and math. That we could use as a complete data house and dashboard over the big picture, but we didn't have any luck finding.
Yeah.
Well, there is, Acadia does do a math assessment, but we don't have it all in one house, like, the data doesn't all come together.
Yeah, yeah, because we do the Acadia's also, but I don't think it's on M-Class, right, they have their own data house, yeah, that's over there.
Those are only two agenda items, let's see if any other comments on either of those two things. We good? All right, well, that means we can adjourn if you're done. We're good? All right, four fifty, four fifty-six. We'll adjourn, stop recording.